If I could get your attention, good evening, everybody. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Jeff Kane, our pastor at C3 Church in Milton, to lead us in invocation.
Excellent, thank you. Father, I thank you so much for this day, God. I thank you for a beautiful June day in Milton, Georgia, and I thank you for a city council that's willing to look to you for wisdom and guidance as they make decisions for our city. And, God, we thank you that you're faithful, that as we look to you, God, you're faithful to provide that wisdom and that guidance, God. So I pray that you'd open their hearts, their minds, and their ears today, God, to receive from you the best for our city, the best for our people, the best for our residents, God. We trust you, and we thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, June 2, 2014, to order. If our city clerk would please call Roland and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call Roland for the June 2, 2014, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call Roland this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Rick Morick is traveling and absent. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, want to welcome everybody here, myself, as well as the council, appreciate our public here, and we appreciate you guys, any input that you have, and are glad that you're here. If our city clerk, please call the next item, the agenda.
Our next item is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 14-142.
Okay. I know we need to add a executive session for land acquisition as well as lease negotiation.
Yeah, discussion of lease.
Okay, good, okay. Is there anything else? Anybody, Karen?
I need to move Item 4 under the consent agenda to the...
Split it out and do it separately.
Yes, to new business, because I will have to recuse myself from that item.
You say you need to take Item 4 off the consent agenda?
And move it to new business, so I can recuse myself from the new business.
Now, I think, Ken, can't we just, we need to move to new business, or can we split this out into Item 1, 2, and 3, and vote, and then separately vote on Item 4, since we're not going to be discussing them?
Well, I think so. I think so, but I think it needs to go somewhere other than just consent. I think that was the concern. So if you split it out, where does it, where does it land on the agenda?
Well, what I'm saying is just vote in two separate votes on the consent agenda, Items 1, 2, and 3 as a package, and then separately vote for Item Number 4, and Councilmember Thurman can just step aside for that.
As long as the record of her recusal is clear on the record, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, is that all right? Let's make it simple.
Yeah, well, you've got 1, 2, 3, but then you've also got to go all the way through.
Right. We'll, we'll just name it as, you know, all 10 minus Item 4, and then we'll vote separately.
That's fine. I'm going to recuse myself.
That's fine, yep.
Okay. Anything else? All right, do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda with the exception of Item Number 4?
Are we approving the consent agenda or just the agenda?
We got to approve the agenda. I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to...
Mayor, I'll move that we approve the agenda with the addition of an executive session for land acquisition and lease negotiation. In addition, I would like to modify the consent agenda, remove Item 4, or to divide up the consent agenda in such a way as Item 4 is voted on separately.
Second motion.
Okay. Got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, we can move on to our consent agenda. City, Mr. City Clerk?
We do have public comment this evening.
Okay.
General public comment.
I'm sorry. Then let me read the public comment rules. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. City Clerk, do we obviously have some general public comment?
Yes, our first comment this evening comes from Brenda Hemphill.
Hello? Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. My name is Brenda Hemphill. I live at 700 Hembry Road in Roswell, but I own Katie's Car Wash at 12960 Highway 9 here in Milton. I've been a supporter of the city of Milton since Milton was formed, and I've had the pleasure and privilege of serving on committees such as the Highway 9 Visioning Committee, the, not the north one, the one south. I served on the LCI Corps Team. I served on stakeholders for the Deerfield Form Base Code, and I actually did attend a couple of meetings for the Highway 9 North Visioning that's being presented tonight. Now, I'm not here to speak about the Highway 9 North, but within that document, there was a comment that says that GDOT will be proposing a concept of widening of Highway 9. And as timing would have it, GDOT held that meeting last week. I do not know how many of you have seen the drawings for the road widening from Winward to Forsyth County, but it will make the concrete truck companies happy, because there is an awful lot of impervious material that's going to be laid down if that plan goes into place. It has, within it, it has two 10-foot wide multi-use paths, one on each side, and then it has an eight-foot grass path between the sidewalk and roadway, and then it has two lanes, and then it has a raised median. Now, when I built Katie's back in 2007, everybody was concerned about having places with driveways on every lot, and most of the buildings and businesses, you know, came from one-acre lots with, you know, that used to have houses on them, and that's the way, you know, a lot of us have developed. There was a house there when I built Katie's. Well, we actually worked with GDOT and Fries, and we came up with a design where we have a shared driveway, and it lines up across the street from Fries, and then the other businesses have their left-turn lane in front of it. So I personally spent a lot of money to help develop that, and it's turned out to be a good solution, so we didn't have two driveways on my side. We just had the one that the Feed 'n Seed and I share. And that's a good way to go, but what this new concept from GDOT does is it takes what I have today and reduces it to right-in and right-out, and you have to go down the street, you have to loop around and come back and go the other way, and that is an absolute business killer, particularly for a retail business. For a business like mine, or the Feed 'n Seed, or Milton Auto, any business that has something like that, a right-in, right-out is going to reduce our business. And what that means to me is a lack of revenue opportunity, and what it means to the city of Milton is the same thing on a bigger scale, because several of the people I have talked to are business owners who have these one-acre, two-acre lots that are, for lack of a better word, landlocked. We have no, no way to get out except on Highway 9. We can't build something behind us, and so to take us now and reduce what we can have is obviously, you know, concerning to us, and you can say, well, gee Brenda, they're not going to do any...
One minute remaining.
What?
One minute remaining.
So you can kind of look at me and say, well, gee Brenda, they're not going to do this for 10 years. But my concern is that this plan will grow arms and legs and in people's mind, become institutionalized that this is what we're going to do, and it can impact businesses now from being able to sell. All these places that we tried to identify in all these committees for redevelopment will have an impact, and so what I would like to ask Milton to do is, GDOT said at this meeting that they worked with Milton, but what I would like Milton to do is lead GDOT into what we want through all these committees with all this visioning that will allow us, from a business, to still proper, to still prosper while Milton has this new theme for what we want it to have as the kind of community we are. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And while during public comment, we don't discuss items back and forth, I do plan on speaking a little bit about the GDOT plan and the timing of that and the details before we discuss the Highway 9 item that's on tonight. So thank you for your comments. That's very important. Did you have any other general public comments?
Our final comment, general comment, comes from Erin Howdeschell.
Hello. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I'm here as a business owner. Oh, I'm sorry, Erin Howdeschell. I'm a business owner in Milton, 12940 Highway 9 North, and that's Milton Tire and Auto. And I am here to basically, same as Brenda, we're just two doors down from her. I'm very concerned about a right-in, right-out entrance for us. If someone has to go down and turn around to access our business, it is going to kill us. It's, we had a business over in Woodstock, and when they added a median down 92, our car count was cut in half, obviously, that we weren't able to survive, so we had to, you know, leave, and we came over here in the hopes of staying in this community. Our kids attend the schools, play sports, you know, we support the community, so just asking for your support on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda, so you can call that item, and we'll separate out Item Number 4.
Our first item is approval of the May 12, 2014, City Council Work Session Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 14-143. Next, approval of a contract between the city of Milton and TNT Uniforms, Inc., for the purchase of fire department uniforms, Agenda Item Number 14-144. Our next consent agenda item is approval of a Parks and Recreation Agreement for Outside Providers Between the City of Milton and Young Men's Christian Association of Metropolitan Atlanta, Inc., Agenda Item Number 14-145. Our next consent agenda item is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Engineering 303, LLC, for the Thompson Road Cedar Park Stormwater Improvement Project, Agenda Item Number 14-147. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the city of Milton and Prime Contractors, Inc., for renovation services at City Hall, Agenda Item Number 14-148. Approval of revisions to the Personnel Policy Handbook to clarify the sick leave usage policy, Agenda Item Number 14-149. Our next consent agenda item is approval of an intergovernmental agreement concerning the Georgia Crime Information Center, GCIC, Criminal Justice Information Systems Service Agreement, between the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, and the city of Milton, Georgia, Agenda Item Number 14-150. Next, approval of an agreement between the city of Milton and North Fulton Express, LLC, for fleet vehicle maintenance and repairs, Agenda Item Number 14-151. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Dorfman Consulting, LLC, for transfer of development rights, TDR, evaluation services, Agenda Item Number 14-152.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of Item Number 14-146. All is prepared and read by staff.
Second. Okay. We've got a motion by Councilmember Lusk, a second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. City Clerk, call the next item, which will be Item Number 4, and Councilmember Thurman, for the record, will recuse herself and not be voting on this.
This item is approval of the following subdivision plats. Kingsley Estates, Phase 1, Unit 2D, final subdivision plat. Phase 1, Unit 2D, addition of 19 lots, 54 through 63, and 67 through 75. Valmont subdivision, final subdivision plat revision. Revision of excess easement for lots 31, 32, and 33. Arcaro at Triple Crown, final subdivision plat revision. Delete road reservation of 44 feet of right-of-way and add to Lot 10 and 11. And finally, Triple Crown, Phase 5, final subdivision plat, addition of lots 1 through 9. This is Agenda Item Number 14-146.
Mr. Mayor, and before, there's a motion made with respect to this. Councilmember Thurman has already made very clear that she is recusing. Could you just provide a very brief reason why, just for the record?
Yes, my family has an interest in the Valmont subdivision and those lots, so I will be recusing myself based on that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And the rest of the councils, or someone would like to make a motion on this item?
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 14-146.
Just a second. Okay. Got a motion for approval by Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. All right. We can, please move on to our first presentation items.
First, we have consideration of an ordinance accepting the revised Georgia Municipal Employees Benefit System, GM EBS, defined benefit retirement plan, and general addendum, Agenda Item Number 14-153. Our second item is consideration of RZ 1318 Birmingham Highway West Side with a frontage of approximately 373 feet by Piedmont Atlantic Capital to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to CUP Community Unit Plan to develop 13 single-family residences on 19.5 acres. Agenda Item Number 14-154. Next, consideration of ZM 1403, southeast corner of Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road containing 22.30 acres currently zoned mix, mixed use, and AG1 agricultural to modify conditions 1C, 1D, 2A, and 3B, RZ 040116 by Capkey Birmingham Partners, LLC. Agenda Item Number 14-155. Our fourth item is consideration of ZM 1404, 305 Crooked Stick Drive Zoned CUP Community Unit Plan to modify condition 1E, RZ 85181 to the following, to reduce the 100-foot building setback from the property line of the CUP to 50 feet by CD Hayes. This is Agenda Item Number 14-156. Next, consideration of ZM 1405, 16720 Quayside Drive Zoned CUP Community Unit Plan to modify condition 3A, RZ 06-70 to the following, to reduce the front setback from 30 feet to 28 feet and 3 inches by Jane A. Schwartz. Agenda Item Number 14-157. Our sixth item is consideration of RZ 1322, to amend Chapter 64, Article 7, Division 6, Northwest Fulton Overlay District, Agenda Item Number 14-158. Next, consideration of RZ 1401, to amend Chapter 64, Article 1, Section 64-1 Definitions, Agenda Item Number 14-159. Next, consideration of RZ 1402, to amend Chapter 64, Article 9, Administrative Permits and Use Permits, Agenda Item Number 14-160. Our ninth item is consideration of RZ 1403, to amend Chapter 64, Article 9, Administrative Permits and Use Permits, to create a new use permit for a rural or agricultural event facility, Agenda Item Number 14-161. Our final first presentation item this evening is consideration of RZ 1404, to amend Chapter 64, Article 9, Administrative Permits and Use Permits, to create a new use permit for artist studio, Agenda Item Number 14-162.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to...
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that the public knows these are just a first presentation, a reading for the record, that these will be items coming, coming in our next meeting, so there's no discussion on these. Okay, go ahead, Matt.
I'll make a motion to approve the first presentation as read by staff.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Kuntz, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, now, we're going to move all the way over to new business. If, Clerk, could please call the item.
Consideration of the State Route 9 North Visioning Plan. This is Agenda Item Number 14-163. This was discussed at the May 12, 2014, Work Session. I do have four public comments. Do we want to go...
And if you wouldn't mind, let me just make a statement, because as we had a public comment, and also know there's probably some concern that they're not really scheduled to be, have anything to do with each other, but just so happened that the GDOT meeting was the other day, and there are some proposed plans that would affect this area. As someone even mentioned, it's probably, it's a minimum of 10 years out, could be more, but I wondered if it's okay, Chris, if I can either maybe have Carter discuss a little bit about how that works, and I believe they also, the DOT would, you know, we certainly, as a city, would want to work with them to guide them in a way that helps our businesses, but also I think if they make any drastic changes, they have to negotiate with those property owners and impacts. But Carter, if you give us some kind of formal on that, or at least straight from the horse's mouth.
Sure. I guess the timing was a little bit coincidental in the study and the development of the concept plan, but the current schedule has, has the concept plan being completed this year. Environmental reports are being done, and those are scheduled to be in 2016, with right-of-way acquisition being scheduled for, to begin in 2019, construction in 2022, with completion in 2024, so it is a long-range project. This piece of the State Route 9 project is part of an overall project that's being done from Alpharetta up to Coming, and so it's one small piece of a much bigger project that they're working on, with our piece being one of the final ones to be, to be completed for, with construction. All of the comments that we're hearing, this is the perfect time for those comments to come in. Part of the development of the concept plan is to listen to all the property owners in the city to try and develop the best cross-section to move forward with. Any of those comments that are being provided should also be provided to GDOT, and anything that wasn't given to them at our concept meeting can be given to them on their website. That website can also be obtained through, through our intersection website, miltonintersectionprojects.com. If you go on to that website, all of our intersection projects throughout the city are, are on there, as well as the link to the GDOT site to provide any of those comments. So it is a very long-term project. What we have provided to GDOT has been typical sections that were developed through our LCI and a number of other studies, so they are listening to the city. If we have comments on those, if we have additional information that we may need to provide to them, we can do that, but we've tried to give them all the information that we've developed through a number of studies over the years to make sure that it's consistent with plans that have been provided previously, so now's the time to provide those comments if they have them.
A couple of questions, and, you know, it's, if it's totally clear-cut, but, you know, for example, I know I've spoken with somebody that has vacant property now, but that on that preliminary plan, it showed a road through there, but again, you can't wait 10 years and just leave your property there waiting unless the DOT wanted to go ahead and buy it, which I don't think, they're nowhere near ready to buy, you know, acquire property.
That's right.
Correct. So if someone went ahead and built a building there and developed it, at some point, if the DOT still decided they wanted to do that, they would have to work out equitable compensation for that person and the business, their, their property, or if there's a business and a property there, the DOT may probably elect to not go with that plan. Is that, is that in your experience, what, what you would see?
All of those impacts will have a bearing on the ultimate typical section that's developed, and any impacts to properties, whether it's through easement or right-of-way acquisition, are always fairly compensated for. So that will be part of the right-of-way process and part of the concept design process as they move forward to look at the impacts, both from just a personal level as well as an environmental level, so.
What about, you know, we've heard some comments, concern about a median and whatnot, to the impact to, to local businesses. In your experience in the past, how has that been handled? Have they listened to be able to not put a median in there, or if they do, do they, would they compensate the businesses, or what?
They're not typically compensated for the installation of the median. They do listen to the developments and to the, to the cities on the installation of the median and how that works, location of curb cuts, locations of signals. All of those things are evaluated by GDOT and the development of these plans. We, we've provided the median as part of some previous plans that we've developed through the LCI and a number of the Highway 9 studies, so if we have some of those that we think that we want to modify, now is certainly the time for us to provide those comments to them.
Okay. So we need to get the word out, too, for any, you know, our citizens that are impacted there, to please give us their comments and concerns and whatnot.
Absolutely.
As this moves forward. Matt?
I'm just, I try to think of solutions when people talk about what they're, what they're wanting, and I'm thinking about how Roswell has their Highway 9 section south of Open Bridge, and they have that red median, bricks inside the middle of that. Is that something that's possible in this situation, or is that just a city partnership with GDOT? I'm just thinking off the top of my head, but that's obviously not a median, that you can, you can turn in a middle turn section.
I don't think that was GDOT's first choice. I mean, is it a possibility? Certainly something that we could present to them.
Sure.
You know, it's a fine balance between recognizing the need for traffic and operations and the growth in traffic that we're going to see in this area with providing adequate access to the developments. So I think GDOT tries to evaluate those, and I think if we had any of those comments that we wanted to present to them and have them evaluate, they would do so.
Why would make that one thing we present to them? I think we're all sensitive to that. I think, I might be wrong, but Alpharetta, I think initially downtown Alpharetta, they had a median proposed, a solid median, and they did, you know, with impact and input from the city, they did change that around a little bit.
Yeah, they've done a lot of modifications to the typical section that runs up through Alpharetta.
Yeah. Bill?
Two things, Carter. I had heard from some sources out there that the comment period was going to be closed yesterday, I guess on the 1st of June. Is that true or not?
There was a closure date on the GDOT comments. I don't know if that was yesterday or not, to be honest with you.
But what you're saying, the city can accept comments, because the city will be going back to discuss with GDOT.
We're still in the process with them.
Secondly, is the speed limit on our section of Highway 9 open for consideration as far as lowering the speed limit?
Well, there has been some discussion with GDOT about that. The way they will typically establish that speed limit is they're going to look at the 85th percentile speeds on that road currently. I think if we were going to propose that or look at that, probably now is the better time to start gauging those speeds than in the future. They're going to be driven by, more by operational characteristics on the road and exist... They're gonna be driven by, more by operational characteristics on the road and existing safe speeds that they feel that the road can support.
And while I'm thinking about it, Chris, would you be opposed, or would it be okay to, maybe if we could get some kind of communication out, even if we just target it to Highway nine business owners, or some kind of information out about this, and that, you know, we'd love to have comments or whatever from anybody that's impacted, just, just so folks are aware of that, would that be okay?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Carter, for that update. Now we'll give Michelle back up. Sorry about that. And then I, I believe, do we want to take a public comment first on this, or have the presentation? What do we need?
It would be your preference. Why don't we go ahead and make a presentation and then hear the public comment?
Okay. We'll have a public comment right after the presentation.
So it can all be relevant to each other.
Okay. Good night, Michelle McIntosh with Community Development, and I've given this presentation to you before, and some people may not have seen it, so we'll just go through it quickly here. This is about the Highway nine north vision study that we started in twenty thirteen. I'm gonna give a little bit of background about the project and the process and key findings, discuss and go into some next steps. And before I go into the project, just to recap, this is the schedule for the GDOT project, which is separate from the vision project. Carter talked about it, and here are all the dates and the website is on there, and so just wanted to make clear that the state DOT is, is working on their project separate from the Highway nine visioning study. Okay. So a little bit of background about this study. The Milton Comprehensive Plan identified areas within the city that would be future development areas, and they are the Arnold Mill area, Crab Apple, and the Deerfield Highway nine area. Crab Apple already has a plan existing that was done last year, and Arnold Mill, a plan was worked on this year, and that'll be coming before you, July seventh. And we also did a planning study for the Highway nine area south of Bethany Bend through, using LCI funds, funding through the Atlanta Regional Commission, and that project did not go all the way for the full length of Highway nine, which is why we decided to do a project for the north portion of Highway nine, so that we can make everything planned and have a vision for the entire corridor. This is just some maps of the LCI area that was done south of Highway nine, and just wanted to continue that with the Highway nine north, so we took the properties north of the LCI area and continued along Highway nine for our study area. The process for the visioning included, included getting all the neighborhoods and landowners together. We had a couple meetings at the Crooked Creek Clubhouse. We did visual prep and survey and map, and a map exercise and so on. And with these exercises we did with the participants, looked at a bunch of pictures of what they might want to see on the corridor, they chose the ones they felt were the nicest ones. We took the top images, we got a map out with the study area, and everybody stuck those images on, on the map, showing what they would like to see, and of course, we had discussions about that as well. So what we came up with for the general area of Highway nine was to, that it would be a low-scale, two-story building type of corridor with a mixed of uses, office and residential and some retail possibly. The buildings would be addressed to the street. We would like to encourage walkability along Highway nine, including wide sidewalks and heavy landscaping, et cetera, keeping the question fencing and adding some architectural characteristics in there to keep the Milton aesthetic. And also, we're proposing some gateway signage as you enter Milton along Highway nine from Forsite County. During the general meetings, it showed that there were two areas that we didn't have general consensus on, so we had special meetings for those two areas. We're calling it, calling it the special treatment areas, and you can see them identified on the map as Special Treatment Area one, Bethany Cockburn area, and the Special Treatment Area two, which is the area along Five Acre Road. We conducted special meetings with a focus group during the summer of last year with a facilitator, Dr. Elliott, and we went through and identified the issues and addressed the concern, and we reached a consensus with that, and all of those meeting notes, complete meeting notes are in the appendix of this plan. Just briefly about the two special treatment areas, the Special Treatment Area one had a rezoning application with proposed plans already, and so the developer came in with several iterations of this plan, and within the focus group, a list of conditions was added, and the plan went for a rezoning, and it, the rezoning took place from AG one to NUP approving for twenty-seven homes. That was back in December of twenty thirteen, so that got resolved and approved. The second special treatment area along Five Acre Road, this does not have a rezoning or special development already preconceived. Folks just wanted to be able to come to one place on any type of non-residential use that may occur on those parcels. The idea was that these uses would keep a residential look, have the style of pitched roofs and have the horse fencing along with buffers to the residential behind. We also talked about having heavy buffers and vegetation along Five Acre Road so that you won't be able to see any potential non-residential uses. We also talked, talked about ingress and egress and signage. So that got resolved, and so here are our steps that we went through. We went to Planning Commission twice, and then we came to a work session with the council on May twelfth, and so here we are with the council discussions, last decision today on June second, and we're proposing that the next step after this would be to move into form-based code process where we would have additional public meetings to address details on architectural style and whatnot, and then, of course, it'll go through the legislative procedure with Planning Commission and again, City Council. So this is the first step with a vision, and we'll continue with trying to get this implemented if that's your wish. Questions? Discussion?
Is there any comments? Questions right now, or again, we'll take some public comment and we'll discuss it further, but is there any question right now?
This is probably the time specifically for the five acres right now, I guess?
You can. Again, we're gonna, you know, may want to get some public comment, too, to see if that adjusts anything, but you've just got a general question, Bill?
Some specific questions. Michelle, you doing your aesthetic...
Counsel, if we're gonna get into questions, could we go ahead and hear the public comment right now, and then we'll get into the discussion?
Okay. I just saying, there's any quick, general.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's open up to public comments.
Our first speaker this evening is Nick Scarimbolo.
My name is Nick Scarimbolo. I live at eleven-ten Crowbot Way in Milton Preserve, and I do want to take a moment to commend your efforts on the vision plan, particularly where it regards preserving a less intensive neighborhood. There's discussion of setbacks, buffering, landscaping, and there was concern mentioned for safety in terms of merging into traffic. I especially want to commend you on the efforts, as Michelle outlined, gathering input from the community. Unfortunately, Milton Preserve, where I live, was in its infancy when much of this was done, and what we're asking is that you be able, you bring the Milton Preserve neighborhood into line with the rest of the vision. It's most significantly, Milton Preserve is most significantly impacted by the expanding of Highway nine as it presently stands. I did speak to Mr. Busby from GDOT, and likewise, he welcomes comments, and by the way, that June first date is a deadline only in terms of GDOT's willingness to respond in writing. So they will have responded in writing, they will respond in writing to any comments received by, having been received by June first. I could detail some of the aspects of the plan that seem troublesome to us, whether it has to do with the medians, the traffic lights, or the bicycle path, the multi-use path, but I don't presume to tell the experts their job. Our two main concerns are our ability to exit, merge into traffic, and to enter Milton Preserve safely and efficiently. The other concern is maintaining a buffer between the highway and our community. As it stands with the plan, which Mr. Busby said is very preliminary, it, it seems to really encroach upon Milton Preserve. Pacing it out from curb to curb in front of our house, including the turning lane, it's about forty-eight feet, four lanes of traffic, eleven feet each lane is forty-four feet, plus a median that may be sixteen feet, plus twenty feet on either side, significantly, would significantly encroach upon our neighborhood, and that, that is definitely, definitely not in line with the other aspects of the vision plan. So what we would, what we would like, we realize that Milton Preserve was not around when a lot of these meetings were going on, and I noted that there were a number of special meetings. We would like to have one of those special meetings with whomever you would designate would be the most appropriate to have that meeting with, so that we can discuss these concerns in, in greater detail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Our next comment comes from Mr. Tony Stewart.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Stewart making his way to the front. I just, we'll let you know, we're not gonna manage the time for these four comments. I'll let you manage those. I figure this is an important enough issue. We don't want to cut anybody off.
Yeah.
I'll let you manage the, the clock as you feel appropriate.
I'll definitely, for several comments, I'll, I'll give everyone a chance to speak.
Hi, guys. My name's Tony Stewart. I'm not a racecar driver, I'm the other one, and I live at three-twenty-five acre road. The property line for the five acres that my wife and I live on is adjacent to the southernmost two, two acre tracks that are wanting to be considered to be commercial. We've lived on our home for the past thirty-one years. We moved to there in, I think, nineteen eighty-three. I grew up a few miles north of here in Forsyth County, and where I grew up, the place that I grew up, we had chicken houses north of us, chicken houses west of us, and a service station south of us, and I swore that as soon as, after eighteen years of living there, I swore that when I got out and got grown, I would live in a subdivision, so I wouldn't have to put up with the sights, the sounds and the smells that I put up with when I was growing up. In about nineteen eighty-two, we bought our lot, and we bought it from the original developer. His name was Blaze Danton. He and his partners had bought the land where the subdivision is now. They thought the second airport was gonna be built up here, and they were gonna cash in on having land next to the airport. Well, when the airport did not come to Alpharetta, they decided to build a subdivision, a twenty-eight lot subdivision with twenty-four of the lots being five acres or more, and four of the lots being two acres on the front of the subdivision. We actually bought our, our lot from Mr. Danton, who built the subdivision. He had moved to Fort Lauderdale, Florida. He had bad allergies, and that was where he was gonna build his house, but he decided that he couldn't live there, so we bought our five acres from him. The first question I asked him was, is there any possibility that commercial development can be done on those front four lots? And he assured me, he said, no, we have protective covenants. There's no way in the world that, that commercial development can be built on those four lots. And he seemed to know what he was talking about, but when we closed, I asked the closing attorney the same question, and the closing attorney went through and researched and came back and told him the same thing. You have protective covenants. The protective covenants say that only single-family homes can be built on the lots. What we, what neither of these guys apparently knew or didn't tell me, and I certainly didn't know it, is I guess protective covenants have a certain limit as to how long they're in effect, and apparently that's twenty years, and we know it now, we didn't know it then. We, we, again, have lived on our land for thirty-one years and have loved it. We hope to live there for the rest of our lives, and we would greatly prefer that no commercial development be allowed on the four subdivision lots at the front of the subdivision. However, if that's not possible, we would like for the, any commercial development that's done to be as, as less intrusive as possible. Last year, we worked with Kathy Fields, Michelle McIntosh Ross, and Dr. Elliott to go over our concerns, and I would like to compliment Kathy and Michelle for their work. They listened to our concerns, they listened to both sides, and they tried to reach a very good compromise, and I think they did a very good job. And I'm in favor of the agreement that we reached as it currently stands. I think that we have, we have entrance restrictions, we have the type of businesses that can be located there, restrictions on that, we have buffers, we have landscape that must be put in that would, that would kind of hide the development, and it sounds good, that what we have come up with sounds good, and as, if, I would be in favor of it if it is built or if it continues the way that it was written, what we had agreed to. But my concern, and I think a lot of our concerns, first of all, our neighborhood is kind of split. There's some like me that feels that we can live with the agreements, and there's others that do not feel that we can live with the agreements and feel that it should be maintained as it was built as a subdivision. But for me, my main concern is, and I think from the agenda, agenda tonight, I've seen a couple of things, there's always, no matter what is in the plan, there's always somebody that's gonna want exceptions to the rules. I saw one tonight where they're wanting to, to drop a hundred-foot buffer to a fifty-foot buffer. I don't think I've ever heard of anybody wanting to increase the buffer from fifty feet to a hundred feet, but, so that's our main concern, is that, that this is just a stepping stone, that if we agree, if, but that the agreement that we have reached goes to a certain level, and then that might be used as a stepping stone to go up to a higher development, to more intrusive development, which would, which would have a more detrimental effect upon our neighborhood. We have kind of had problems when we were governed by Fulton County. We've had some problems with Fulton County. When Lake Laurel was built, they had to get the zoning changed so that they could build two houses per acre instead of one house per acre. They came to our neighborhood and asked us to support them. We looked at the type of houses that they were gonna build, they were nice houses, and we agreed to it. What they did was they took our agreement, attached it to a different plat than the one they brought and showed us, and the new plat had five acres of commercial land cut out for it, and that's where outrageous bargains and risk is today. So they attached our agreement to one plat, and they substituted another plat and went to Fulton County and got it approved. So we've, we've got, kind of got a bad taste on that, and we also, over the past thirty years, we've also had problems with Fulton County. Fulton County, as you may know, was wanting to build a four-hundred-and-seventy-six acre landfill where Crooked Creek is now. We, our neighborhood, fought that landfill for six years. We, our neighborhood, fought that landfill for six years. We spent thousands of hours and thousands of dollars stopping that landfill. And if we had not stopped the landfill, we wouldn't be sitting here now. There would be no City of Milton if we had not stopped the four-hundred-and-seventy-six acre landfill. We, we have a lot more faith in the City of Milton than we do in Fulton County. We love our, we love our subdivision, and like I said before, we want to live there forever. And our hope is that whatever is, agreement is reached, that it has enough force that it will govern the future development there and help protect our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. That's our next speaker. Please.
Our next comment comes from Marilyn Phillips.
Ms. Phillips here.
I'm Marilyn Phillips, and I live at 360 Ponytail Road, and we built our house in nineteen eighty. And we no sooner moved in than here comes Fulton County. And where Crooked Creek is, is Site thirteen, is what they call it. That's where they wanted to move the Morgan Falls. So we formed Sanity, Inc., and mainly our subdivision and surroundings, everybody put in money, and we hired a lawyer, we did all this kind of stuff. And we went down to the courthouse, and Mr. Lomax shook his finger, and he said, you're going to have a landfill out there whether you want it or not. And he was really very upset. So my husband, Jesse Phillips, wrote a law that said you cannot put a garbage dump within a half a mile of another county unless they agree. And of course, that was Forsyth County, and they said, no, we don't want a garbage dump there. And I'll tell you, he worked and worked on that, and retired early, and that's one reason we joined Milton County, because Fulton County was so bad. And so I just want you to keep it nice, because if there had been a garbage dump there, nobody would live around it. You'd have no taxes, you'd have nothing. So please do not ruin our subdivision, because I'm old, and I don't want to have to move again, unless it's to a senior living. And also, I want to appreciate your having a prayer at the beginning. I belong to Alpharetta Senior Center, and of course, we can't do that anymore. Luncheons or anything, you just have to bow your head for a silent prayer, because we want to hurt anybody's feelings. So anyway, I just appreciate that. And like Tony said, the plan you have is pretty good as long as you stick to it. But we've had so many things where you think it's going to be like a hundred-dollar buff, buffer, and then pretty soon, it's only a fifty-foot buffer. And nobody knows when they come in and sneak it in and change it, so you can't fight it. And our subdivision has been very nice, and we all get along, and it's very convenient to everything. And like Tony said, I expect to be there the rest of my life, however short it is, or long it is, I should say. Well, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Miss Phillips. I just, Ms. Phillips, for the record, if you noticed when we started with the prayer, I did the prayer before I formally opened the meeting, so just little rule, little ways you can get around. All right, if our next speaker, please.
Our final speaker is Carolyn Husk.
And I want you to especially take note of exhibit number four. On two pages, there's aerial views of the properties in question. I'm Carolyn Husk, and I live at 235 Hereford Road in the five-acre estate subdivision, which is on exhibit one of the information I gave you. I oppose withdrawing of the four one-point-nine-four acre parcels along Route nine at five-acre road entrance for commercial use to benefit four individuals at the expense of the other twenty-three property owners. It is zoned R2 conditional, which is exhibit two of the Fulton County records. The developer covenants are stated on the original plat, which is exhibit one, which I provided to the City of Milton, but I shrunk that plat down. The builder covenants never expire, which are on exhibit three, which is an Atlanta Journal Constitution article of nineteen August first, nineteen ninety-six. Until three years ago, all protective covenants expired after twenty years. But the state law recently was amended to automatically renew those that were in force as of July first, nineteen ninety-three. The five-acre estates development was put in force in nineteen seventy-eight. The covenants were set to expire in nineteen ninety-eight, and this law was passed in nineteen ninety-three, so the covenants are supposed to stand. Both parcels south of nine have code violations. And they're an eyesore when you turn to come into our community. The grass hasn't been maintained. On the further south one, there's like thirty or forty cars parked all around the house. On the, on the dome construction one, which is for sale by Bull Realty, there's trash all over it, the grass hasn't been maintained, somebody's dumped all kinds of stuff, and it's been there like that for years. Exhibit number four is an eight-page commercial real estate flyer that I obtained from a code violation, a huge commercial real estate sign that was out there and had a flyer, and it was out there for eight years. And amazingly, last Friday, it was changed. It is now a smaller sign, and the flyers were removed. But this, this flyer really shows you the intent of the, of the, of what the use of the property was, and the, he had this in a, in a zone residential neighborhood, the sign up on nine. Now, if you will look at the pictures on page one and two, it clearly shows the four parcels that we're talking about in the five-acre estates, and it shows the, the commercial development across the street, which has a zoning plants that are supposed to hide the thing. Now, if you look at page two, there's a clear picture of that, and, and it shows five-acre Now, transplant the commercial that you see there with the planning buffer, and transplant that over to our entrance. That gives you a true picture of what it will look like to come into our five-acre road subdivision. I belong to a six-thousand-member church in Buckhead, and there's a lot of real estate agents, and everybody I talk to, I said, this is unprecedented. There's ten residential real estate developments from, from Wimward to the Forsyth County line, and this is the only development that you've singled out to make our entryway into commercial. We, we have no homeowners association to protect us in this subdivision. And hundreds of real estate agents, they said, it's going to ruin the, the property value in there. Nobody's going to want to come in if that goes in and buy a home in there. I wouldn't want to sell a home in there. That's my concern. Now, the other thing that wasn't pointed out was I had talked to the gentleman after he bought the property, and dome construction, and his property didn't pass the perk test, so he couldn't build there. And he had asked, the, the state told him he could not access Highway nine. He had to have the, the entrance to the property and use a five-acre road address, because the state will only allow so many, you know, things, because it's a busy highway. He has to use a five-acre road address. And none of the, the, the stuff I read about was this addressed, or was it ever brought Then you already answered my question, because I thought this would, when I went to the GDOT meeting on May twenty-first, and they're proposing going right, right through his property to here, which would refute all the plans, but, and then, then change the five-acre road subdivision. And, and when I went to that meeting, GDOT was unaware of Milton's plans when they proposed that, to turn that into commercial property. You call it special, but it's really commercial property. My take on this, if, if Milton wants this as a commercial tax base to include all one-hundred-and-thirty-five acres in our subdivision, don't just pull out the four, do the whole subdivision. Because as you'll see, on that, on that plat of the subdivision, you have access to Cogburn Rowne at the end of, of the five, Hereford Road cul-de-sac. You could, you know, so that would solve the Bethany Bend, Bethany Bend problem, and the Francis Road of all the congested roads. You could come through our thing, and we could all make out like bandits on our property value. Because when I talked to Michelle, I said, what happens to the rest? She said, oh, that's all going to be R2. So you're, you're just splitting apart the whole thing. And I, and I hope you really consider this, and, and, and the picture really shows you what it looked like, not, not the pretty, pretty illustrations in the case study. This is exactly what it looks like. And, and move this over to our development. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, students, there.
That's all, sir.
That's all? Okay. I'll open it back up for council. Any questions to staff, or our attorney, or court? Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah. I mean, the first question, too, is, and not being any kind of lawyer up here, the legality of the subdivision, you know, all the points that were just brought up. Could you explain where we were with that, how that works?
Yes, we, we forwarded the addresses in the subdivision to the attorneys to do the research, title searches on those, to see if there were any covenants, and it found that there were none.
And maybe Ken, you can relate to the question of the automatic renewal of the twenty-year...
I would want to look at particularly the covenants, and I think that they may be in the handout up there. I'll take a look at those. I'm not prepared to speak to them right now, but to the extent that handout had the covenants that were part in, I'll be happy to look at those and give the council a formal opinion on whether they had an automatic renewal of the state law.
Okay.
I have a quick question just concerning that. Are covenants typically filed along with the property? So just because you write up covenants yourself, it doesn't make them covenants unless they're actually filed as part of the property records? I guess I'm confused. I want to make sure I understand the legality of it.
It depends. I mean, you can certainly come up to a private agreement that's binding between the two parties, but the purpose of filing it in the records of the clerk's office is to make it binding on the world. That's the reason that things are filed, and that's what I'm going to be looking for. In other words, when she's talking about our office looking at whether or not a subdivision has covenants, we're looking at the court clerk records. I'm not able to go out to private individuals and see if they have private agreements, because candidly, those aren't going to run with the property. I'm looking at things that have been filed. That's what I'll look at when I look at the covenants that were just circled.
No?
Couple of things, Michelle. Your section on aesthetics, you mentioned pitched roofs. Would that preclude a flat roof with mansored surround on it?
Well, yes. We heard that nobody wanted a flat roof.
Right.
Yeah. Especially for the five-acre special treatment area. And we even showed an image with a partial flat roof, and it didn't go over well.
Good.
So we tossed it.
Several places, I think on page twenty-three, and again, on three of the study area context, you mentioned the trail sidewalks, and there seems to be an inconsistency of the width that's called out. In some places, it's called out as six feet, other places, it's called out as ten feet. What is our, isn't our standard ten feet?
Well, it varies because of the differences for the general area, and we had those special areas along five acres and so on. And we're going to get into those details as to what the final dimensions would be during the Form B school process.
Okay. Thank you. And in several areas, page seven back here, you call out building heights, well, in several areas, as one to two stories. I believe in the northwest Fulton overlay district conditions, they actually call out an eve height of structures. Wouldn't it be more specific to call out an eve height in this overlay district rather than stories?
Right. Yes. And we thought about putting in a height feet and so on in here, but we felt like during the Form B code is when we'll get into those details. So we just went ahead to say one to two stories for right now in terms of division, and then all of the details will come during the architectural guidelines in the Form B code.
Okay. And then, another question on page twenty-eight, you call out natural landscaped buffers. It seems to be a contradiction of terms.
Yes. We had Mark Law come in on this as well, you know, when we were having the discussions, and people wanted it to be screened.
Sure.
But they don't want it to look too much unnatural, so that's why it's sort of contradictory, because you want it still to look natural, not too manicured, but still, just so that we can't see through. So sort of both.
Well, it seems like a subjective type of approach.
Yeah, and that's why Mark Law would be involved, yeah.
And who's going to interpret that as we go forward and get into this then?
Well, Mark Law, he's going to be our advisor on that, and plus, we will have the folks on the committee with the Form B school team to work on that. And then we tried to show the images in some of those renderings, just to give an example of what people felt. So we had a few images. Some people felt some of our other images that we didn't show did not work, and so the ones that we showed, that's more along the lines of what they want to see. So we'll pretty much use the pictures as well as doing some Google explanations in there.
Well, I guess I'm concerned we get into this process a year, or two, or three years down the road, and who's going to be satisfied with that natural landscape look that are separating these properties? Is it solely going to be Mark Law's decision in cases like that?
Let me, because there's probably not a clear-cut answer on that. How do we handle that typically normally when we have situations like that? I guess the community development director, along with the arbrist and staff, worked pretty hard to basically take the council's wants and desires to try to...
That's it.
Picture that. Now, obviously, if something gets passed and it's, it doesn't look like that, the council has to... has the option to go back and talk to staff and say, hey, we need to ramp this up a little or it's, you know, something we need to watch, keep watching. Karen, I'll come right back to you. We'll see if anybody, anybody over here. Bird, go ahead.
In your, in, like specifically on page 22, on the rendering, it shows access to these two, two sets of two acre lot, or two, two, four lots off of Highway nine. It was mentioned in the comments that that may or may not be allowed. Is that, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, the plan that we came up with that people agreed to has the two access through those off of Highway nine into two lots at a time. So that the general public doesn't have to go onto five acres to turn into. So that, that's what we're sticking with. Of course, GDOT showed a different rendering last week and talking with Sarah. And she has already started conversations with those designers to see if they can come up with something else, more like what we have. Or even if, whatever they do come up with, we'll bring it back to see if that's satisfactory or not.
And then on this visioning study, it's just that as a vision, if we won't look at anything specific until the specific site plan comes available for one lot or two lots or four lots or any of that.
Correct.
So any of the specifics at that time will be looked at, at that time.
Correct.
But this, this does offer some buffers and anything like that.
Yes.
And those will be well advertised in meetings, just like any others on.
Well advertised, yes. I sent out special emails about these plans.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe?
So Michelle, first of all, gotten a lot of good feedback on the process, how everything went. Obviously, you guys did another good job on putting together this study.
Thank you.
And so I wanted to commend you on, on the efforts there. But let's pretend for just a second that we shouldn't do the study. Okay, let's roll the clock back 12 months. We haven't anticipated doing this study. The property owners for the lots that are part of five acres right now, they're zoned R2. So they wouldn't have had an option to do anything with their property unless they presented something to the city council for, for rezoning purposes, right?
For rezoning.
So the lots would just sit there the way they are now. Nothing would have changed. The visioning study incorporated those lots as, as part of a potential area where a commercial development could take place. It's not being, well, it's being somewhat specific on what can be there in terms of what kind of impact it could have. We're not looking to, you know, put a gas station or something like that in one of these lots, but we're not making any zoning changes as part of the visioning study. We're just opening up the door for zoning changes to, to come for us, before us in terms of that, right?
And we like to call it non-residential.
Non-residential, that's a good way of putting it. So, so what was the, what was the impetus or what was the catalyst as part of the visioning study that made us include those lots as part of this? Was it just an obvious thing that we had to do? Was it a presentation by the property owners, hey, I want to be included in this so that we can potentially change the use of this property? Because obviously the, the affected property owners that surround that property, if you roll the clock back 12 months, they didn't have to worry about this. This was not a problem for them. So, so what was really the catalyst that caused this to be included?
Well, if we go all the way back, if we go all the way back during the comprehensive planning stage, we looked at the whole area along Highway nine as potential development area, the whole entirety from Wynwood all the way through. We got the funding for the LCI, which was south of Bethany. And we figured, we didn't want to leave the rest of Highway nine without a plan, so we decided to, to do that. Before the plan, I conducted, contacted all of the property owners along Highway nine to have stakeholder meetings and we talked with everybody and, and we felt like those, those properties should be included. Because they were underdeveloped and some, two of them were vacant, et cetera.
Right. Yeah, I'd like to just add if I could, in that by moving up to the north side of Highway nine, we really felt it was an opportunity to allow all the stakeholders along there, whether they're existing residents or property owners, to really have a conversation about what that end of Route nine should look like. And that we would first do a vision plan to reflect their vision and then cement that vision through a form-based code zoning overlay. So it was an attempt to get ahead of development. Because right now, we felt that a lot of those parcels were either underutilized, underzoned, and that in the future, we could see a lot of rezonings coming in. By having the conversation to establish a common vision, we would be able to determine what type of uses they want, what type of heights, what type of design controls, the buffers that they would like to see. So we had that conversation. And that's really what we attained, I think, through this visioning, is that we were able to get a head of development to ascertain what the community would be comfortable with so we could put it in place. So we wouldn't have a lot of rezoning battles for each parcel coming forward, which could end up being rather piecemeal. So it's a concerted vision.
Okay, so, so when we started discussing with the affected property owners and the stakeholders in this area, if we include these four parcels as part of a potential non-residential use. And we negotiated some type of a deal, and deal's not necessarily the right word, but we negotiated some position where.
Consensus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we did this, would that be acceptable? What, what all options got discussed? I mean, was there anything else that was on the table that could have been done? I mean, obviously, I'm having a hard time visualizing those pieces of property being used for much anything else, just because of their proximity to Highway nine, what's going to happen to Highway nine in the not-too-distant future? And so is somebody going to really buy that property to build a home on? That's hard to imagine just because of the, the location. But what other options did we give the stakeholders?
Well, we, we went through various uses that could, could be on there in terms of, and also what the designs are, where the egress, if, if, if you notice, the idea is that there's a shared access point, each of the two, there are, there are four parcels and two are together and the other two are together on the side of five acres. So, so they share access onto Route nine. Rather than having drive, four driveways along Route nine, and there's no access onto five acres by these parcels. And so, so we, we really talked about, as I said, use, design, access, buffers. And those are the things that we talked about. And, and we thought it was a, a conversation that the community should have because these parcels were, we thought, underzoned, zoned as residential. And considering they're on a busy highway, we didn't really see in the foreseeable future that that was probably the most productive land use. And, and we tried to help the community move ahead of that in terms of what would be acceptable so that if developers came in in the future, they would know essentially what the community's consensus was. And that was really the exercise.
Joe, I'll get some more questions, but why don't we move it around a little?
Well, I want to kind of go through and then I'll fill some, but.
Okay.
Give everybody one chance and then we'll come back.
What kind of?
Oh, you have, I thought. Okay, you must not have raised your hand earlier.
What kind of real restrictions? What kind of real restrictions can we put in place? I mean, obviously, the property's zoned R2 right now. So until somebody comes up and like Bird said, presents a zoning, a rezoning application to us, we, we don't know what they want to do with the property. What kind of restrictions are we putting in place either with the visioning study or with potentially with the, the form-based code for these properties? In other words, how can we give the residents right near there some idea of what really is going to happen here? And how do we keep this from being a stepping stone like some of the residents mentioned to something that they don't want? Because I would agree with them, their history is, they say one thing, something else happens. We want to make sure that we're not responsible for that.
Yeah, we, we tried to be as specific as we could, keeping in mind, it's a visioning study, it's not a zoning.
Right.
So, but we, we did. We, we, yeah, we have square footage, the size of buildings, the square footage maximums. Uses have been identified, some uses are definitively not accepted. Height, you know, roof lines. So we tried to be as leading as we could in the vision, which will help us as we start to develop the zoning overlay, which again, also will be a public process and really is the implementing part. So we, we tried to address a lot of those issues, which are concerns clearly by, by the neighbors in terms of what could happen and how do you mitigate the impact of a non-residential development in, in the front.
Okay.
Okay, Karen, now you can have, not the last one, you can speak to the others you'd like. Go ahead.
A couple of things. I want to make sure, I know we spent a lot of time and money actually developing this visioning study and coming to an agreement. I want to make sure the agreement that was reached, there are no surprises in the vision study, the agreement that was reached is fully encompassed in this visioning study. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We, I, I wrote it into the text in the visioning study and the complete notes and the final decisions are in the appendix and it's referred to in there.
And typically, a visioning study is more of a 40,000-foot view.
Yeah, typically.
This was a 40,000-foot view where we zoomed in at times. But the devil really is in the details and the details will be in the form-based code.
Correct.
And I assume any rezonings prior to a form-based code getting approved, we could just defer until we had a form-based code. Is that correct?
You can defer it, but we would also work with them similar to what we did with the Cockburn-Bethany.
To make sure that we're coming up to agreement. I guess what I want to make sure is that everybody understands the form-based code process and this isn't, this isn't the end. This is really just telling us where we want to go and the form-based code tells us how we're going to get there. And the, and make sure that they realize that the specifics of things like the architecture and everything else will still, are, are still going to be decided based on this visioning study. But they're still going to have a lot of impact, input into all of those things and that still will be coming before the council for approval to make sure that we have everything, you know, that agrees back to the visioning study, but also the much more details.
Correct.
Councilmember, I want to clarify one thing because I, I heard you ask the question, if we were to get a request in for a rezoning, could we just defer it until the form-based code was in place? And I believe the answer to that question is no. We could certainly, you know, if we were to receive an application tomorrow for an application to rezonate, it's going to travel under the law that exists at the time the application's filed. So that would be the code that exists today. So until we get that form-based code in place, I mean, the council could debate whether or not they wanted to put a moratorium in place in this area, banning redevelopment or rezoning requests until such time as the form-based code is in, in, in place and functioning. We could do that.
But everything would be a full rezoning if it came before us now. And so we could put whatever restrictions on the rezoning or we could elect to defer the rezoning until we knew for sure what we wanted to come. It wouldn't be automatically deferred, but we would, we could put restrictions on it to make sure that it agreed with what we feel like the form-based code is going to.
It is certainly within your discretion as a council to defer an item if it comes before you that you don't feel as though you're ready to make a decision on. But I would caution you against deferring it with the anticipation that a new law was going to come into place. Because you would have to process it in accordance with the law that exists at the time the application is filed. So I, I just, I want to be real clear here that if something were to come in in the next week, I don't know that the action of the council is to defer it pending the outcome of a, of a form-based code. If the council sincerely doesn't want to see rezoning requests or applications come forward in this area until that form-based code is complete, I just need to work with the city attorney to put a, a short-term moratorium in place while we protect the status quo to be able to get that code done.
And I guess that's what I'm asking, do we need to do that? I want to make sure that somebody can't come in and just based on this vision, have us, insist that we rezone a property before we get a form-based code in place that tells us really how we want it to look.
The intent in, in what a moratorium does is maintain the status quo. So if, if that is what you want to have happen, does the status quo maintained while we work to make sure that at the end of the day, the substantial, whatever the words Ken would use, substantial justice is done in that area? That's why I'm not the lawyer and I'm serving a different role. But if, if that's what you'd like to see in this area and just say, hold the status quo, guys, until we can get the form-based code done, I'll have Ken prepare a short 69, 90-day moratorium. And you all could debate that.
And I guess what I'm asking is, do we need to do that or does this give us enough that something that came in that we didn't feel like conformed to this, we would still have the authority to defer it or deny it if we didn't believe it conformed?
You need to do it.
Even though this isn't specific.
And, and the way you've asked that question, the answer is, is that you would, you would want to have a moratorium in place if that's the condition you want to capture.
Well, I noticed there are some zoning variance applications up on Highway nine, down north of Bethany, so.
Those would travel outside of any future moratorium because their application's already in.
Already pending.
But if the council would like to direct us to prepare moratorium language for you to consider, not, not suggesting that you'd all vote on it, but, and decide that it's the right thing to do, but if you'd like us to bring that forward at the next meeting, we could certainly do that or we could, honestly, if you felt time was of the essence, we could, we could do a special called meeting a week from tonight to consider it if you wanted to.
I would encourage it since according to the schedule here, these form-based codes won't even come in front of us until the end of the year or the first of next year. So we're looking at six, seven, could be eight months out.
A lot of that is driven by how much comment there is and how many, you know, once it finally makes it through the process and makes it through the planning commission and seeks in the public meetings and all that stuff, that, that drives that calendar.
And I would ask the question, Ken, legally, I don't know that, that's a long time to put a moratorium, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it, it is, but I get the sense though from the discussion, this would be a very narrowly tailored moratorium, limited to only a few parcels. Candidly, the risks of a challenge to a moratorium diminish the smaller land area you're talking.
Okay, well, I, I would prob, I'd be in favor of at least discussing it if you, you know, if staff wanted to word, word one and let us discuss it at our next meeting.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, we spent all this time getting this visioning study in place, I want to make sure that we don't have something that comes in that doesn't conform to this before we get the details done.
What, okay, so what I'm hearing is that you want the status quo held until you can enforce this vision study and if that's the case, we need to have a moratorium in place.
We're discussing moratorium, legally, make sure that, you know, we can hold that.
And just to clarify, so it's, it's for the people that all agree with this plan, both sides, that we got one more, a little more teeth in it once the form-based code is, is to, to hold it to what, what y'all think you agreed to?
Exactly. Great summary.
I think I've got a majority that would consider that.
And, and just so I'm clear though with respect, and again, I'll bring you language and you're not deciding tonight what you want to approve, but to the extent I draft language for a moratorium, you would want the moratorium to basically mirror the area that is embodied in the vision study.
Correct.
Thank you, I understand.
Well, but the visioning study includes all of the Bethany Bend stuff. I mean, does it need to include all of it or is we really talking about just the five acre?
I think it makes it simple if we keep it to the visioning study area because that's what we're going to put a form-based code in place for, right?
And would the form-based code just be strictly for commercial-type stuff? Because what if somebody comes in with a residential, is it not going to be, it's not going to be based on the?
Well, with the form-based code and what we're proposing in here is a mix of uses, so residential uses are allowed on some of these parts, I mean, on all of them.
How does this impact the Bethany Bend that they've already?
It doesn't. That's, that's.
It doesn't affect them at all because they've already?
Anything retroactively is not affected.
But I, I didn't know if it weren't, we got your building permit or when you actually for each parcel or is it go just?
Their zoning travels with the land.
Yeah, we're only doing zoning moratoriums, so land disturbance could be fine.
So anyone who's already got their zoning.
Right.
That's right.
Application is fine.
Yes. And we typically spell that out in the moratorium document itself to make clear.
Okay, Bill, did you have?
No.
Okay, I just want to make a couple of questions and then comment. One, Carter's still here, you know, heard some concern in Milton Preserve, but it sounded a lot like that would have to do with the DOT and, and access and whatnot. So maybe if you could put a note to, to really take a look at Milton Preserve and we give our comments and work with the DOT, that we'll take that into consideration. One, one comment I do want to just clarify and make sure, to make sure everybody knows, as far as a tax base, I could speak for myself and I believe wholeheartedly for our council as well as our staff, and also Ken can comment legally, we do not and won't make decisions based on whether it's neutral revenue for the city, more revenue or less. We, that can be part of a, several reasons, but I don't believe it's legal to make a zoning or a decision like this based on if it brings in more money for the city or less. zoning or a decision like this based on if it brings in more money for the city or less. So am I correct? So I just want to make sure everybody knows, we did not do this and our staff didn't do this to say, hey, we can get some more revenue for the city. I'm the first to say and I commend everybody that's worked on this and worked with their staff and our neighbors and property owners and I see everybody's point. I, you know, love to have a beautiful five-acre lot in there. It's beautiful and a home, but the reality is, I think the value is a whole lot more for someone with a five-acre lot that sits back off of Highway Nine and has a buffer than a two-acre lot that abuts Highway Nine as far as someone wanting to build a home there. And so what happens in that situation, and some of us up here have been doing this now with the city of Milton about seven and a half years and we've learned. And a good example is right down the street, there was some AG1 property that an African wanted to put a gas station in and it was the same kind of situation and it abutted some residential and it was ag property, but there wasn't really any ag property uses that made sense there. Council denied the rezoning for a gas station. And Ken can comment later, Georgia law kind of weighs heavily with the landowner's rights within reason and when things change and if it doesn't make sense for a piece of property anymore the way it used to be zoned, they can overcome that. And again, we denied a gas station, it went to court, court came back and told us, nope, you guys are going to have a gas station there. So all of a sudden, and unfortunately the property owner was willing to still work with us, but we lose all control of saying, hey, can you put some more buffers? Can you do this? Can you make it look nicer or can you, you know, help out with the surrounding areas for buffer, you know, working with the neighbors? So I commend our staff, the reason we would do something like this is knowing that at some point, if we don't work with something and try to come up with a future solution, it's going to roll right over us if we just step back and don't do anything and try to stop everything. So that being said, you know, this is a great way so that even, and I totally get it, if you're, you know, property's right next door to, nobody wants to be right next door to a commercial area or whatever, but the way this is where, you know, has worked is at least folks have had an opportunity to weigh in, you know, hopefully it's been a win-win and give a little and also it won't be as bad as possible and it will all, you know, benefit at least equally all property owners. So that being said, and I would also like to, you know, again, Ken, if you can, at some point, the whole thing with the covenants, again, I know you, you know, you just got hit with that, you can look at that. So, and, you know, again, my biggest point is this, somebody mentioned catalyst, this was not a catalyst by the city to come and say, hey, let's take this land, let's make some more commercial. This is just trying to get out of front and front so that we can all kind of shape and have a vision and, you know, give everybody here that's affected. It's not something that, this hasn't come to us for a zoning and all of a sudden you guys are coming out going, hey, let's, you know, either fight or support the zoning. It's like one day, this is probably going to come before us for a different use for zoning, so let's kind of be prepared and tone it down a little bit. So I commend everybody for that. Is there any other questions or comments on this?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before you conclude and work your way to a vote, the city attorney and I have just had a discussion as to how we bring back moratorium language for you all to consider based upon the timing of moratorium that requires certain legal advertising deadlines. Those deadlines are longer than we would have to bring back this language at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the 16th. So what I'd like to do and like to propose that we do in place of that is to publish a special called meeting one week from tonight at 5:45 for the purpose of enacting an emergency moratorium, if you all choose to, for 30 days. Get it in place and then subject to us doing the proper legal ads, that we could have a public hearing to extend it beyond that. Otherwise, we're into July and with the urgency I've heard out of the council tonight, I think that's, July 7th is probably too far into the future. And if that's the case, we can get something in place a week from tonight. Is that satisfactory with everybody? And just the fact that we've provided this even public notice now of that meeting helps to demonstrate that we're trying our best based upon the calendar requirements to get as much notice out as we can, but that's the way to get it into place quicker than July 7th.
Okay. And a question on that, Ken and I, you know, I'm totally in favor of doing that and putting a moratorium on there. I don't believe we have anybody that's ready to go to submit something or even hadn't gotten any wind of anything like that. I just want to make sure if we're talking about six months or whatever, are we setting ourselves up? Because I know if I were a property owner, you know, if there was an opportunity to come up, I don't know that, would it be fair to them to say, look, you can't even do anything for the next six months? I just want to make sure we're covered there and that, again, to my point a minute ago, that they couldn't roll over us, you know, some legal way saying, hey, it's not fair that you're, you're holding us up for six months for, you know.
Right, no, Mr. Mayor, candidly, that's a, that's a real good question and here's my thought on that though. You have a visioning study that you want to ensure does in fact become your vision. That is a very reasonable basis for this sort of a moratorium. It's narrowly tailored and candidly, a moratorium is like anything else the council does. If you believe that the time is ripe irrespective of whether the 180 days or however long you may extend it for, that it needs to be cut short, you have the right to do that as well. So it's really within your discretion. So I think the city manager is right, let's go ahead and at least present to you the 30-day. That'll get it in place and then we can give some more thought to extending it.
Okay. Thank you. Bill?
Legal question, I guess. We were to approve this agenda item tonight considering the issue that's come up with the extension of covenants approved by legislature, how would we make provision in that moratorium or in that motion for that issue?
Yeah. I'm not overly concerned right now and I don't mean to be diminutive of any of the opinions expressed, but I'm just, I'm not overly concerned with respect to the existence or enforceability of those at this time. To the extent that I conclude otherwise later, I'll bring that back to you and candidly, those covenants are private restrictions on property and to the extent that our visioning study may be inconsistent with those, they nonetheless still would allow a private enforce, you know, a right-of-action to enforce those covenants. So our visioning study would have little impact to override those. Everyone understand, I mean, we can make land use decisions all we want to, but if there are binding covenants that thwart that, they're still enforceable irrespective of the fact that we have a visioning study that says otherwise.
Okay.
One more question, I think Chris, this way for you, the, a lot of people want to know the enforcement process of the construction process. So as a developer starts doing things, you know, they want to make sure he's not suddenly trying to put a wall where he shouldn't or things like that. How does the city go about doing that so the people can understand what we do?
That's, are you asking the question when somebody comes in with a development plan, how we get from the paper plan to the built environment?
Right.
You know, that happens through a multi-process, multi-phase process of different permits issuing. It typically originates with some type of a land disturbance permit and then building permits beyond that and they're all, they're all built in the, in the real environment to match the construction documents that we have. And we have an assortment of inspectors on hand that specialize in not only the building construction, but soil erosion control as well as all of the different site design, site grading and stuff. So it's inspected it multiple times from start to finish and if, if something's not built to plan, then we take enforcement action. I mean, because what's, what's approved is what you all approve. It's not approved to build what you don't approve. So, you know, that's, I guess, from start to finish how it happens, but it's, it's a multi-permit, multi-phase.
And enforcement action might include?
Well, the first thing that we would do, we would issue some type of a stop work order so that we halted any further violation of a building code. And that can be brought back for, before you all for some type of revocation action. It could be that the applicant, you know, missed it by a foot and seeks a variance from Board of Zoning Appeals, but then an independent body of citizens have to agree that that was in fact a legitimate error. So there's, there's all sorts of checks and balances, but the first thing we do is we stop any future, any future non-compliance.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'll, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll open up for a motion on this item.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the State Route Nine North Visioning Plan, Agenda Item Number 14-163.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Lusk, a second from Councilmember Coons. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. And I just want to thank the citizens for their input and work on this along with our staff. All right, move up to reports. Anything anybody in the council wants to report on?
I got a couple of things. Carter, again, that roundabout is fantastic. So if anybody hasn't done that yet, we have our first official roundabout in Milton on Hopewell-Cogburn-Frances and normally it's a 25-minute drive at 5:30 in the afternoon to get down here from the north end and I got here in 10 minutes. So that was, that was great. For those over there, we were having a library being built in, over in Crab Apple, we had a groundbreaking, which was fantastic and, and for everybody that was there, great seeing everybody, so we're excited about that. That should be done in about a year. So, but real, real good process. And finally, for, for those of us that are college grads, that, for those parents of college grads that graduated, I just want to say congratulations and because today is my birthday and I want this in the records, I want to have a special song for Councilman Morick, whose daughter graduated from a small parochial school in the Midwest and has got to be written in the records that Matt Coons played the Notre Dame fight song. So, there we go. So honored to Rick's daughter, great job. So anyway, there you go.
Okay. Anybody else? I do want to make, Carter and all of our staff, I meant to say it the other, other night as coming to meetings, same thing like the turnaround, the intersection at 140 and Providence Road or, I don't know, that's New Providence, I believe, with the stoplight, it sure does make a difference. So it's, it's kind of exciting for some of us, especially been here since incorporation. There's a lot of things when we first became a city we wanted to do and within the first year or two, we were working on it, but it, we've all learned sometimes it, it takes quite a while, but now we're starting to see a lot of, a lot of things that are, yeah. Go ahead, Bill.
One last thing. We had our sixth annual Memorial Day celebration last Monday. We had somewhere in the neighborhood of 500 people who attended. This was the first time that we had it at Freedom Park up here in the corner. If you haven't seen it, it's a must-see. It's a great addition to our park system in, in the city. But I commend everybody who, who not only participated, but was able to attend that ceremony this past Monday.
Thanks to Councilmember Lusk as well as staff, volunteers and everybody that was a part of our Memorial Day service. It was, got lots of great comments on that from folks that attended it. All right, moving over to staff, Chris, before we go over to executive.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we have one that's published tonight, which we'll get to in just a second. I want to let you know just a couple of generic more staff reports is that you're going to be seeing some type of a, almost an executive summary or a position paper come to you in the next week or so that details what we believe is our next steps in our conservation initiative and this whole thing that's been battled, batted around as a green print, I think we have found a solution that I think you're going to be very happy with that is quite different than the first multi-hundred-thousand-dollar plan that was originally proposed. I think you're going to be very satisfied with what we believe we can do that would be Milton's green print, that doesn't do what Councilmember Longoria is worried about, which is recreated in a plan, we already have plans that we just probably could overlay on top of each other. So watch for that. I bring that up because I've asked Laurel to send that, it'd be through me or through Stacy, to the council, so please look for that. Summer camps have started, a lot of activity around Milton. I tell you that today at Milton High School was a great football summer camp, we've got a music summer camp that started, Camp Joyful Souls has started, so all of the summer programming is in place, which is, which is neat to see. As you remember, and I'll just remind you tonight, I will be gone after tonight for a couple of weeks and back on July, or on June the 18th, not July, June the 18th. So I will not be with you at your next meeting on the 16th, but I will tell you that if I pick one meeting not to be here in a year, that was the one to do it. I didn't know that when I booked airplane tickets in December, but holy cow, it's a long night. And Stacy keeps asking me, she says, you know, and should, should we, can we do, can we push that off to July? And I was like, nope, can't do it. Keep building it, keep building it. So you're in great hands. Stacy will have the day-to-day operations of the city, the staff obviously I think is capable of functioning on their own. You're, you're in excellent hands. So I'll still be checking emails on a, as often as I can basis without ending up divorced at the end of the next couple of weeks. Having said that, let me turn it over to Matt. He's got some good news tonight in severe weather warning sirens. This is a project that has been long overdue for our community and it's about to go to implementation and we just want to give you an update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a handout I put together briefly. It's not a...
Do you mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Matt Marietta. My address is 13,000 Deerfield Parkway. I don't have a, I don't have a slide presentation. Some of these items, we're just kind of getting finalized at this point. As we've discussed before, the city of Milton is the donut hole in the outdoor warning siren system. Alpharetta has them, Roswell has them, Cherokee County and Forsyth, to the point where I regularly get calls from citizens wanting to know why, why we're setting our sirens off when the surrounding municipalities and governments test them on Wednesday mornings once a month and I have to tell them that we don't have a system. The handout that I put together kind of goes through the process that we've been through so far and then there's a couple of maps on the back. The proposed sites and the numbers attached to them fairly well mimic the sites that we discussed during the RFP process. We're trying to come to a little bit more of a, a specific location for these sirens. Just so you know, the process goes through sound propagation studies. It considers things like heights of trees, the height of the land, different geographical features, residential versus more heavily constructed areas like the Highway Nine area as opposed to some of the more rural areas in the city of Milton. And then we also have to consider features like right-of-way, how far off we can put a pole from the roadway, where the sidewalks are. Also telephone lines, it needs electricity. It also needs to be far enough away from the phone, the telephone poles and the light, the electricity poles that we're not interfering with them. So in trying to work all these different details out, I've met with the, the vendor. I've also met several times with Public Works and other people in city staff to try to make sure we make this as smooth as possible and I think we're close to, to nailing down several sites. If you'll turn to the map page, the first map page that I've included, these 10 sites are the ones that approximate what we base the RFP on. The blue line that you see is optimal, again, assumed sound propagation. It's not entirely, it's not perfect. The only way to know exactly how much sound and what decibels it's going to be out would be to actually put the, the towers up and then go out and stand with a decibel meter up in the air. So there's different things that can impact how far the sound travels, but these are the best models that the, the vendor has come up with. Clearly, depending on topography, the sirens would be heard outside of these areas as well. As we put these models together, a few significant hiccups were, were found that, that I would like the opportunity to try to address. So meeting with the vendor, we came up with a second map that moved a couple and added two more sirens to the system to try to fill in some of the, some of the bigger gaps that we had. This initial bid request was put out as a design build, so this is the design portion of it and then the, the build portion is, is coming next. Just so you know, the, the initial 10 that were requested in the bid have actually been ordered. I've got the radios, the, the units are assembled, they're on the black steel poles that we've discussed and they are in a warehouse ready for installation once we're able to firm up these, these sites. Additionally, as you look at the second map, if, if we go ahead and add in these two extra sirens, which by the way, because it was an itemized per-unit bid, are, is actually already, there's room in the current capital budget to add these two items without having to do any amendments to, to the budget that I have for this project. The Cherokee and Forsyth and Alpharetta also provide some warning that, that will provide coverage in these areas and you'll notice on the second map across the bottom, the, the ones with the A and the number next to them are actually the, the ones with the A and the number next to them are actually Alpharetta siren sites that, that sound in the city of Milton, that people in the city of Milton can hear. So the, the coverage is actually a little bit greater than what you see on the, on the first map. So we're, I'm going to enter into some discussions with the vendor about potentially adding these two additional sites and relocating the site number nine a little bit further up Thompson Road to try to spread the, the sound system out a little bit. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to let you all know the, the areas that we're looking at and what the system is going to look like ultimately. Again, this is just one piece in the, the warning puzzle, including weather radios, our code red system, our social media and the other things that we use to try to communicate with the citizens, and I think this is an important piece, and I'm excited to be close to making this step and filling in this hole. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all have for me on this.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Yes, this is exciting. Any questions?
Yeah, just to be clear, Matt, the, the areas that aren't part of the blue or red circles, it's not like that the sound won't be heard there, but it's going to be below a threshold that would be acceptable for emergency warning purposes?
Well, actually, the, the vendor, the vendor who I met with that, that prepared this, said that these are conservative estimates. So most likely, there, there will be places where it's heard beyond that, even at the, the threshold decimal level, which is 70, 70 decibels. The, the red lines actually represent 65. Those are still in the realm of our, our noise ordinance anyway, so I don't know that...
I was thinking the same thing at the time, so, okay.
I don't know that there's going to be too much of a, a concern beyond that, but that, that is something, like I said, that you can only tell for sure once you get out there and see how it works and, and hold your decibel meter up. So if we have to address things after the system is in, then, then we can revisit it as we need to.
Okay.
And I, I'm sorry, maybe you said this, the, how do you trigger to turn them on? Is it by radio frequency, or is there, I mean, obviously not a wire going between each one?
I have a red button.
Right, but I just, I was just curious about that. And when are you playing?
Actually, I run around and I turn them all on when the tornado comes through. This is part of our relationship with the city of Alpharetta's dispatch center. They actually have the same vendor, and the tornado sirens are set off the same way that our fire stations receive a tone out when there's a call. So if you've ever been in a fire station, heard the buzzer go off and the tones drop, it pretty much does the exact same thing, except their tone's specifically tuned to the radio, to the radios on the sirens.
Okay. Anybody else? Thanks, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, you, I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss land acquisition and lease negotiations. So move.
Second.
Okay. Okay, I've got a motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into executive session.
I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.